I'll order the 2526 official budget hearing for the Fort Edward University School District. Welcome everyone who's here in person and those of us watching online. I'm going to turn the meeting over officially open. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Reader and Mr. Holden to present the budget information.
You could have taken the whole show. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. This is our required budget hearing. This is on top of the workshops that we've had as a school board. There were four of those. Backing up from the workshops that we presented to you, this goes all the way back to the fall, shortly after I had had enough time in the district to kind of get orientated with how Fort Edward had done things in the past and kind of get some ideas about how things were done. Probably was late October that Chris and I started putting officially on our calendar, you know, an hour a week to talk specifically about the budget process. And that we would both have meetings with different people throughout the course of our day. And then we would bring things about those meetings to the table so that we could specifically talk about the budget process and the numbers that may or may not be affiliated with those conversations, with the intent that we could present to everybody, most importantly, you as a school board, a budget that you feel is a appropriate and fair representation of the school district in order to do business for next year. You've adopted a number that we have been presented now to the public for their fair consideration. So the purpose of this hearing is to make sure that all that information gets out there publicly and accurately so that people can make an informed decision on May 20th, which is the official New York State budget voting date, as well as the election of board members. So that's a quick recap for everybody how we got to this point. What we have here are a few slides that I'll turn over to Chris. He'll start walking us through them. They are summaries. They're not the detailed workshop information, but it's the numbers of where we ended up in each of our categories. And then certainly we'll have time for any questions, comments from anybody when we get to the end. So that being said, Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome to our budget hearing. Tonight, we will again provide business direction through transparency and detail and note that the numbers that are current at this time of presentation are actually the current numbers. We also just got word on Friday that the governor did pass the state aid run, so all of the numbers we originally presented are actually where we're landing. So there's no decrease. So tonight, we will, what does the budget, this budget do for Fort Edward? We will review the administrative program and capital, the three-part budget, estimated expenditures and revenues, the school district budget notice, estimated fund balance, and estimated property tax. So what does this budget do for Fort Edward? This is most important. What is our money going to go for? First, preservation of all core academic programs. Unchanged Fort Edward student experience. Full continuation of athletics and co-curricular activities. All collective barding units are under contract. Administrative restructuring for sustainability. Transportation Department optimization. Capital Outlay Project for the piping infrastructure. So here's our three-part budget, administrative program and capital. You'll see the total of our budget for what we're proposing is $13,461,558.73, which is 0.56% increased over last year's budget. And they're broken down into their subcategories and the percentage of what the whole will equal out to. This is how we also broke it down into the estimated expenditures. These are special items. So we kind of, in their subcategories, we've also broken down. But like for the finance, it's not all just business. It's all supporting parts to what we do in our finance world here at the school. Benefits are actually broken down in each subset. So you'll see how that's broken down in the three-part budget. But that's again how you get down to your total expenditure compared to last year. And here's our estimated revenues. So with our levy, miscellaneous revenue, which as we mentioned from our last meeting, that is with the Medicare reimbursement, Medicaid reimbursement, interest and earnings, tuition for the special education, and again miscellaneous revenue. They're all thrown into that category. So state aid projection again is what the governor originally projected. So that's where we're still landing. Appropriate reserves. And then the fund balance, that's also appropriated. And here is our district budget notice. So this is actually required by law, but this is how it's also broken down. We'll see the different percentages and how that's all figured. Of course, the three-part budget really is down at the bottom. So we'll see how those numbers also are presented. And here's our estimated fund balance. Again, we're estimating because this is kind of our projections of next year, but we are still trying to, as you see, get down to whether we're under law required to be the 4%. So that's how we're able to kind of do that with moving of monies. And so that's where we're at. Currently at state, we're almost at 16%. So that's something the governor has kind of already told us we need to stay within the 4%, or they'll start probably taking some of our money because it looks like we're wealthier than we really are. So we want to make sure we're at that 4%. Estimated property tax, again, our tax of $18.98 per 1,000 assessed value. So we broke it down by $100,000 assessment, $150,000 assessment, and $200,000 assessment. So taking the $150,000 assessment, there will be $59 increase from last year or 4.92 home off. Any questions?
Do you have a question?
Thank you. It was all team I. Thank you.
Quick one, Chris, for the capital outlay project. Are we going to be getting capital outlay reimbursement as income this year? Or is that our...
It would usually go from the year before. So it's the year prior. So it's, once we put the money in, you get the 90% of that back the following year. So we actually...
Did we do one last year?
Yep. We actually, my first year of the '23 season, we actually did the IT. So we're getting that back next year. And then we're doing lights for this current year. And then that will come back the following year. And then the pipe will actually be the following year after that.
Okay.
That's how that works.
Great.
But again, 90% of what we invest will come back to our district.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Anyone else? Okay, hereby close the budget hearing. Do we want to take a five-minute recess? Or continue on? You guys are okay? You guys are okay to continue on? Okay. We're doing this in one continuous YouTube? Or do you want to break it?
Do you mind if I take a moment to just skim through the slides on the stream itself? I've only just knocked out the one where I have it pulled up on the stream. I just want to make sure they have a chance to read it alongside having them presented.
Sure.
Okay.
I apologize again for the technical difficulties.
That's okay.
Okay. I just went through them all. Thank you.
I think we're ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm going to call to order the regular May 12, 2025, meeting for the Board of Education of the Fort Edward University School District. The meeting is called Order. Please stand with me for the pledge allegiance. Katie, would you please do their roll call?
Sure. Tim Clark.
Here.
Audra All.
Here.
Sarah Bishinsky.
Here.
Cam Chester.
Here.
And Tara Reither.
Here.
Great. Next up, we need an acceptance of the agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as present? Audra, second vice Sarah. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Carry. Okay, the next part of our meeting is recognition of successes. We have a student that was published in the Chronicle newspaper, which is very exciting. And we'll get to it.
That's so sweet.
And we'll try to get to it. Like to congratulate Gabriella Bradley. If you'd please come up and shake my hand and Mr. Halsey's hand.
Good job, good job. We have Mrs. Bruce is here with her, her teacher in the back. So congratulations to you as well. And Mom, congratulations to you as well. Yes, you should be very proud. Do you want to give a speech to anybody?
No.
Now's your chance. All right. Well, congratulations.
And you don't need to feel obligated to stay for the rest of it.
I feel bad because no one's here.
No, it's okay. Normally, they all have people here.
Watching online, we have lots of fans.
Yeah. Have a good night.
Okay, the next part of our meeting is dedicated to community comments. Katie, do we have any community comment?
I do not.
Okay. Next up, we'll get into administrative reports. First up is the superintendent report.
All right, thank you, Tim. First thing I want to acknowledge is the state budget has indeed gone through, and we have accurate numbers as we've shown in our presentation for the school budget. We weren't sure that was going to be the case by the time we had our official budget hearing. Probably, I'm thinking, would have been my first if the numbers were not definitively in place for my, for a budget hearing that I had to present at. It would have been the first time. So it was getting a little touch and go, but I'm pleased to know that they were in and as we had predicted, which is a good thing for us. Included in that, a lot of media attention to some of the governmental... It wasn't just about the numbers. It's, it's, the budget was used as a way to advance policy in the state. And the big, the big one for us is the cellphone ban from bell to bell that will need to be implemented at Fort Edward. And there are going to be some steps that we're going to need to follow. We're going to have to devise a plan as to how we are going to put that into place with some stakeholder input. We can choreograph all of that, which we will do. The plan will need to be presented to you as a school board over the summer with the intent that you will adopt our plan as presented to you based on stakeholder input, as well as administrative input and your input as board members. We adopt the plan with the intent that it's in place for the start of the school year in September. So that was something that the governor always indicated that she was going to hold strong on. She did, and it was supported by both sides of the House in Albany. So we will move forward with it. Also in place for this summer, and I mentioned this back in the fall after we had started, and it is also in place, is as a board, we are required to add the student member of the Board of Education, known as the ex officio member of the Board of Education. They're a non-voting member, but a member nonetheless that gets sworn in just as you do as, as board members. We are required to have that in place. And we will, I had some ideas back when Aaron was still here as to secure some interest from the high school students. I'm going to use some of our high school staff, particularly those that teach government, those that work with our juniors and sophomores. Obviously, not going to work with our outgoing seniors on this, but this year's juniors and sophomores, we will canvass for their interest. And working with the administrative staff holds some, some sessions to interview them and then bring you a recommendation. If there's any member of the board that would like to sit in on that process, we certainly can choreograph those interviews you will. If we, if we have enough students that we need to hold interviews, we can choreograph the conversations around your schedule so you can be a part of it. Ideally, we should have this in place so at the reorganizational meeting on July 1st, they are also present and get sworn in on that day.
We did have a student ex officio.
It was that one.
Two years ago? Okay. So you're not, it's not, you know, new to this.
Most of us aren't on the board then, but it's...
But the district has had it.
Right.
And we will go back to it. We just have to go through the process to end it there. Quite honestly, it was one of those things with the amount of transition we had administratively that I just kept taking that sticky note to move it further and further down until we got to the point where it's in the windshield, very close. So now we will address it. Last week, Sandy, we were canvassed by the State End Department. They have started data privacy reviews of select districts across the state of New York. And they call them reviews. It's a gentle way of saying an audit of our data privacy that we use in the district. Sandy Wagner, who you know, works for Bosse's, but really we utilize him almost like our director of technology. He also served a neighboring district of ours who also got selected. So he's been through this twice already and was very well prepared for us as a school district with all the documentation that you made, our board policies, the way they're written, our acceptable use agreements that every person who uses our internet here has to sign or if they have one of our devices. We've gone through that process. Sandy and I sat through it. It was about a two-hour virtual questioning session, if you will, and a presentation of our, of our documentation. There were a few things suggested verbally to us that we should probably try to clean up. Things like, how often do we need to change our passwords? What is the extent of our passwords? How elaborate are they? Things like that. We're probably going to get some recommendations, particularly with our students, on how we monitor their use of passwords. And there were a few other things, but they were in the grand scheme of things. My number, our website, the way it's designed for accessibility and the information that's contained was rated very good. So we did something in writing in a few weeks with a little bit of an action plan that we'll put that in place. But even the reviewer stated that there was nothing there that was of concern. They're just strong suggestions to make things more secure. I also sat in on a webinar. This was a little unique. I was not aware of this, but Albany Med has a device, and they are looking for partnering schools in Washington County that would allow for telemed services to be provided for our students right in-house rather than having to leave school and go to a doctor's office. And it's a device that has software and attachments that allows them to take vitalsigns that immediately get registered with the, either a physician's assistant, a doctor, or a nurse practitioner who's on the screen at the other end. And they actually do a telemed visit with our students in the nurse's office before we determine they need to go home. And this, of course, it's not for every medical issue, but there are a lot of things that a medical professional can tell from the vitals. Or the camera is very powerful. They can look into the throat. And for example, if you've got the spots and the strep throat's going around, certain things can be done from telemed, which, you know, in a community like ours where it might be hard for some of our families to be able to get their children to a physician right away, might be challenging. There is no cost to this. There are some agreements, though, that would need to be signed. And there are a few other schools that, in Washington County, that are looking at this. This was an initial presentation for us to at least come back and talk about it if we're something we're interested in. And then they would like to come and maybe do a more formal presentation because there would be a contract involved with Albany Med that you'll have to go through. But the device is quite fascinating. So I mean, it's basically a laptop on steroids with all kinds of attachments that come off of it. It was quite impressive. On the 29th of April, I was very proud to attend the National Technical Honor Society induction for two of our students who go to Bosse's for CTE. Jackson Chester, who some of you might know pretty well, was one of the students inducted into the Honor Society, as well as Leah Monroe, who is also our valedictorian this year. And she was also inducted into the Honor Society. So it was held at Queensberry Auditorium, and it was, it was a very nice, you know, ceremony.
Thank you for attending. Because I have to answer, it wasn't a lot of super tense, sir. Maybe one or two besides Mr. Holden. It was very nice of you to attend.
It was my pleasure. We had to celebrate that stuff.
It was much appreciated.
Happy to be there. Congratulations to, to you as well. And then Steve Neron is not here for buildings and grounds, so I have his report when, when you're ready, or I can jump into it first.
We'll wait till the appropriate place in the agenda.
All right, very good. That's all I have, Ben.
Thank you very much. Next up, business office report.
Thank you, Tim. So updates with our office. It's been a busy budget season and all the jazz that goes with it. But we just submitted the school nicer insurance. So this is our vehicles, property insurance, just basically insuring our building that has been completed and submitted. We also are beginning to do our pre-audit work, which I can't believe it's already upon us, but we've worked with our auditors Bon and Dio, and they opened up their portal, and we're already submitting all that documentation to do the pre-audit. As Ben also mentioned, that the state budget passed. Another addition that affects my office directly is the waiver for retirees has been extended through June of '27. So two more years retirees can still work without any penalty to them. And then we're still working on closing our books. So that's kind of what we're doing in the business office. But that's my update. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Next up, elementary slash rule improvement coordinator report. Ms. McCall?
Lots going on in the elementary side of the house. We finished up the ELA in math testing for grades three through eight. This week, we will do the science testing. For National Honor Society, we took a group of fantastic kids into the double H ranch. They had lots of compliments about our Fort Edward group. They jumped right in and helped out getting the ranch ready for campers to arrive for some of their weekends. But again, many compliments, and they were very impressed with our student leaders. Summer academy plans are in the works. Phase one letters have been mailed out for some of our grade levels, and we'll be continuing to work on that. Friday, we had a fantastic author, illustrator, and publisher come and be part of our assemblies in both the elementary and the middle school, high school. His name was D. Jude Miller, and he just really brought the kids in and really was very engaging, then spent the rest of the day doing writing workshops with various grade levels from K through eight. So I think our, our faculty and staff really connected, you know, a lot of what he was talking about. And he really inspired a lot of the kids through just those brief moments with them. I've already heard a lot of great feedback even today about his visit. For professional development, we had a great PD after school today at our all-faculty meeting, scratching the surface on the science of reading. So setting ourselves up for some long-range planning this year and for next year. Our subgroups have been working on, you know, auditing our current assessment tools such as our three-through-five report cards. We've had some great conversations there and had a few teachers kind of step up and go to Mr. Halsey with me and present some suggested changes there. And we'll be doing something similar with our lower grades tomorrow. I'm very excited to announce that we had 73 Fort Edward students enter into the national poetry contest in grades three through 11. So that was great. So we will see what happens. We announced at our assemblies our poetry contest winners in each of the categories. So be on the lookout the night of the arts and the budget vote for all of those to be displayed. I believe I talked about our Green Shield designation, and that should be arriving here very soon to the school. And with that comes a press release that will go out talking about what we've accomplished here at Fort Edward. We have also announced our P2 t-shirt design contest winners for the elementary and in the high school. Again, be on the lookout for those. I'll send around a little sneak peek. In the high school, we had Patrick Voucher, grade nine, and Mackenzie Birch, grade nine. They were the winners of the t-shirt design contest. And the elementary winner, Damian Mallory, he created something that the kids were very excited to see at the, at the assembly. And just to touch back, in April, Mr. Smith brought 19 Fort Edward students to the All County Band Festival in Greenwich. So that was quite an accomplishment to have that much representation of Fort Edward. Looking ahead, we've got pre-K and K screening coming up this week. I already mentioned the science test. We've got lots of arts-centered activities and concerts coming up. Our spring band concert is tomorrow at 6:30. We are going to have, obviously, the night of the arts and P2 showcase and budget vote on the 20th. We are going to resurrect our Fort Edward's Got Talent talent show. That's happening on the 29th of May. So that should be quite entertaining. And in June, I don't think, I think a few things to look forward to is we have Planetarium Adventures coming, which is an inflatable planetarium, and they have lots of level programs. So teachers pre-K through, you know, some of our middle school and high school science teachers have picked out programs that they would like to have their students attend. So that's a great opportunity. A couple of years ago, we did it with a one-day residency with him being here. And this time, we're doing it for two days. We also have a Birds of Prey program coming, and we're bringing back, I'm very proud to say that PTO has agreed to sponsor the grandparents breakfast. So we're bringing that back at the end of June. Lots going on, a lot of celebrations, and the kids in these groups are all working really hard.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, secondary and people's services report slash people's services. Next up, secondary people services report slash people services.
So, in the last, since we last met, there's been a good amount of field trips and experiences for kids at, I mean, the whole school, but specifically at the high school, we've had a couple of field trips. And just to give some background about the field trips that we offer and we do here, it takes a lot of effort just in the planning piece of a teacher or a building to contact that building. They have to fill out some forms here, they have to talk to transportation, make sure we have that. They have to talk to food service because it could impact if it's a lunch period. And there's a lot of just small key details that someone has to follow up on and it's just a lot of planning that goes into just even going to the field trip. So, in order just to do it, it takes a lot of work and somebody is just doing it just because they feel like it's a great experience for kids. So, some of the great experiences that we've recently had was some of the students went through their art classes. They went to Mass MoCA, the kind of big gallery in Massachusetts. We had some students go to New York City through art classes and through positive psychology class, where they toured parts of the city, they went to one of the big museums in there and they just got to have experiences. One of the students had told me, go, I've never seen a place that big before, referring to New York City. So, just being able to offer some of those positive experiences for students to get out and just to see what's out there in the world. There's been a bunch of other ones too. We, some bring in-house, as Jess mentioned, Dee Jude Miller, where he did the assembly, as she mentioned, for the young kids but also for the older kids. And when speaking to some of the kids who, hey, did you know like you could do drawing as a career? And some of the kids are like, I never thought of it that way. He did a lot of graphic novels and just his experiences living in New York City, how he transformed them into, hey, you know, just a dragon in the subway or this or that. And some of the kids really got to connect with, oh, okay, I can do this. Or maybe they're artistic, but they know what they want to do with it. Another, some of the things that have been going on is, again, the National Honor Society, they did, had that other person mindset through P2 and they went to the double H Ranch. They got a lot out of that as volunteer work and working with others to provide something for other people. Tomorrow, the eighth grade girls are going to a Girls in STEM kind of field trip at ACC. Paige Toomey's taking them. And again, it's through, at Adirond Community College, it's through STEM, just see Girls in STEM and some of the things that they offer. Friday, at Hudson Falls High School, we were invited through the Fort Edward Rescue Squad to have a pre-prom assembly, a MCI, better known as a mass casualty incident. They're gonna see what is actually where a destructive decision or behind the wheel can impact not only themselves but other people. And again, it's at Hudson Falls High School, it's for 11th and 12th graders, that's on Friday. And it's gonna, they're gonna stage like an actual incident so they can see what goes into it to see the impacts that, again, your decisions behind the wheel could have on you but other people as well. And they have like a quick wrap-up and discussion afterwards. And then they'll come back here, obviously. And then with that, prom is the week after, Memorial Day weekend, that Saturday, at the Queensberry Hotel. And so, the students are getting excited and getting ready for that with everything coming up. Just a few other things, like some of the other experiences being offered is through John Voucher's, the history of Fort Edward class he teaches, they've been doing, since the weather's been kind of nice, they've been doing a lot of the walking field trips to see, they're learning about some of the history of Fort Edward. Now, they actually get to get out and walk and see some of the things that he's teaching them and talking about. So, they've been able to do that the last couple of weeks and he's been telling, because I told him, hey, I was a former Soul St, middle school Soul St's teacher at one point in my life. So, he's been telling me about all the great experiences they've been doing and about the class and everything. As mentioned, there's the band concerts around at 6:30. Kind of connecting with that, the try and music, they're, where I'm looking for, inducting, that's what I was looking for, some members into their Honor Society and that's coming up as well. So, there's been a lot of experiences for students in the last month or two. There's been a lot of arts, there's been a lot of either STEM things going on, just a lot of things to engage students with the weather being nice and just giving them different opportunities. On more of the administrative kind of end, I'm working on the final exam schedule, which is crazy to think that kids will be taking final exams in three weeks, four weeks, and getting ready for Regis exams. I have that all ordered, they get delivered the week of, a couple of days before, so that's all set. Kids are getting ready for that. We've been having some talks about graduation, just making sure everything's ready for that. So, these are just a lot of the big exciting things coming up for May and June for the students and the families and the greater community. In terms of kind of on the PPS side, annual reviews, I've still been asking the question and I'm still in the high 90% of families are appreciative and they're just so proud of the growth that their student have been making or students have been making this year and they're just, they rave about all the great things that are happening. I had a quote today from a parent, who this is a student who does not live in the community, but they have a tuition agreement from another school to come here. And just in discussions about everything, how's it going? The parent had said to us that, well, because I have to ask the question, do you plan on sending to the CSC? So, what happens, the CSC of the other district, they kind of run the meeting where they're just to kind of hear and support. And we, our teachers and staff give their reports on how everything's going. So, with that, I have to ask the question, oh, is the goal still, is this the right appropriate place for a student? Should that student come back here last year? And the parent kind of interrupted, their CSC chairperson said, well, I hope so because if not, I'll have to find a way to either rent or buy a house here so my child can go here. So, it was just kind of really good to hear that this parent is really like, hey, I will find a way to buy a house, rent something or find a way if the school that they go to doesn't recommend that they go here, I'm gonna find a way to get them there because the parent had said, this is my child's first time ever going to school and liking it. They've had previous experiences where it wasn't the greatest experience and they weren't so happy about it. She said, now that their child looks forward to going to school. And that's kind of it, we're wrapping up annual reviews. I've had a lot of, the first part of May has been a lot of annual reviews for some of those outside placements. So, our students who go to Wish We Bosse's or they go to, say, the Prospect Center or some of the other placements that they have for students. And that was that great experience just to connect with their staff and those other buildings. And again, with the whole family is asking, you know, how do you feel? What are your thoughts? And a lot of the families are, you know, I'm so glad that our child goes there because some of those supports we're not able to offer in-house and so we obviously pay tuition for those students. But it's also you always try to examine like, is it worth the cost? Just seeing and hearing all the positive things in the growth is worth the cost that we can provide those students with those opportunities for the families and all the families have been super appreciative. Just hearing the things of like, my child has like spoken for the first time ever and starting to use their communication device when a child hasn't been speaking at an age where they should be. So, those are just some of the great positive things that almost make you just like tear up inside of hearing so all these great things happening. So, that's just a quick overview of the secondary school, the schools in general, and the PPS side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to Mr. Holton for the Albany Med's report.
Couple of things here from Steve. First is, he's working on getting quotes on a new glycol heat exchanger as they've identified ours is currently leaking. I have no idea what type of quote might be coming in with that, but the leak was identified fortunately, I believe, since it's related to heat after the main need for using it. We have a major fix on a class, we had one class upstairs in the elementary wing, second floor that had some shattered glass. We have, we secured that initially to make it safe and that window has been replaced. We also are exploring the possibility, we have one radio that's able to reach our buses wherever they are. It's located in the main office in the front. It's not necessarily conducive to, for example, where Kathy Trainer's office is and where our drivers are. Through some exploration of the wiring and things, we're looking for getting a price to also set up a second radio where it would also be available in the transportation office. And we purchased the equipment and then we feel we can install that with some assistance as well. There is a resignation of a part-time cleaner that's taking place, so we will be looking to fill that position from a HR standpoint. And that is a part-time position which is in our budget. And then we've spoken to you about the auction we were holding for some equipment for buildings and grounds, including the John Deere tractor and a lot of its implements. A lot of that was stored along the Broadway side of the bus garage. Most of the items have been picked up and the few parts or implements that are left are being picked up by the end of this week. And we're pleased to report that the whole process, through the auction process, we were hoping for five grand and we secured 9,500 through auction. So, from a business decision, it was a win. And from cleaning out things that we are no longer using on a regular basis and becoming more efficient, it was a win, so that was a good move on everybody's part. And it looks better from the Broadway side of our campus.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to discussion items. Item A is board member resignation of Chris Voucher. He gave his resignation effective May 5th, 2025. I just want to thank Chris for all the honesty he served on the board and wish him well in the future. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being on the board that hired me. Is that inappropriate to say?
Okay, our next item is board seat vacancies and timelines. It's kind of confusing this year. Casey's gonna kind of walk us through it, just so that it's on record.
I think if you don't mind, I might do a visual aid on the whiteboard. I'm gonna go really old school. It's not that bad, but I think it helps to really see it. So, as you guys probably know, for our election, we have four open seats. One of those seats is a full term, so that starts in July and goes through June of 2030. That is technically the seat that Chris Voucher was just in prior to his resignation. We then have another seat that was formerly Ella Collins's. That seat would take effect immediately and go through June of 2027. Ken is currently occupying that seat. Tara Voucher's former seat would take effect immediately and that would also go through June of 2027. Tara is currently occupying that seat. And then with John's resignation, oop, John's seat would be effective immediately and that seat would go through June of 2026. So, this was John and obviously there's currently no one in this one and currently no one in this one. The way that the election works is the person with the highest votes gets elected to the longest term. So, we're gonna call this full term seat A. The other ones that take effect immediately, for just reference, I'm gonna call X, Y, and Z. So, in May, after the election is completed, Tim, Sarah, and Audra are on the board. They're existing.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
X, Y, and Z, who earn these seats, would take effect immediately. What the, what the stickiest part is, is this seat A. So, technically, this seat doesn't start until July, the highest vote getter, but we do have a vacancy with Chris having resigned.
That happened to me last year.
Yes. So, because your seat was occupied, you, because your seat was occupied, you fell off until July. Because there is no vacant seat, we could put the highest person in there, basically appoint them and have them start immediately and then carry out a full term starting in July. Or theoretically, you could also leave it vacant for June. Take a month off. And then start in July. So, I just wanted to give you a pretty good representation of kind of what is happening, how it will land, how it works with who gets what seat and how long you end up staying on there for. And then, I guess, kind of for you guys to decide what happens with that highest vote getter if we're just going to put them on the board, I think that's kind of up to you. Are we leaving this out? Are we raising it?
Let's make sure there's not going to be any point where we won't have a quorum available to conduct business, right?
We have five now, we'll have four at all points.
We should have six.
If Y and Z don't materialize, then we'll still have X, which will hopefully be one of Tara and Ken.
So, why, if we do have trouble getting people to sit on the board, why do you switch from seven to five?
That is all your reductions and those are, those require voter approval. So, your term length.
You have to go off the proposition for this.
Correct, you have to do a proposition, so we wouldn't be able to do that.
Until next year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was a very nice job.
It was nicely done.
We've only been working on this for like a month and.
I've been practicing.
She's in a much better state of mind as clerk to you folks presenting that than she was.
It was a little more cumbersome before too and sat down and freaked out a little bit.
But thank you, I was worried about that twice, I believe, but it made sense.
Okay, our next item, NFC Board of Education Member Mentorship. This was, I came up with, I'd kind of like us to have like an informal mentorship next year where hopefully the vice president would call each of the new members or text them like every two months going through the first year. That's kind of the limit of what I'm envisioning, just like a caller text, you know, decided by the new member what they like to do, just to check up on them as they go through the first year. Does that sound okay? Yeah, could it be a role for the vice president?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see why it couldn't be.
Yeah, okay. I'm just picturing we can kind of do this informally the next year and then the following year if we want to codify it, the policy or something like that.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, all right, great. I'll just make a note of that for after the election or after the organization meeting. Next one, item D, board workshop. I was thinking of having a board workshop in June, inviting, we don't have any outgoing members this year, but inviting outgoing members and oncoming newly-elected members just to get us together and kind of reflect on the past year and brainstorm ideas for the future. We've done kind of like orchestrated or facilitated board workshops in the past where we like invited an outside person to kind of guide us through team building. I'm picturing more informal, just Ben and myself coming up with a few agenda items and discussion topics to get us going, have a dinner, just a couple of hours in June. You guys open to that or?
Sounds good.
Yes.
Okay, I'm thinking maybe the third week in June, like the 16th or 17th. You guys want to jot it down or check your calendars? Do you have your phones out? You can check either of those.
Thinking like a 5:30 start, something like that?
Yeah, yep.
As long as I know ahead of time, we've worked on 5:30, 5:00.
All right, on the 18th, I could possibly have a sixth grade moving up ceremony at my school that I work at. So, I would have to confirm yes or no to that, but the 17th, I don't have any.
All right, let's definitely go for the 17th.
Sounds good.
Don't you agree with that? Sure, one picture anyway, also, time thing was up, it's up, Ben.
Beginning of last year.
I think that's a great idea.
I wanted to do that at the beginning of the school year.
All right.
Good idea.
Sometimes we do a building tour. I don't, I'm not particularly into building tours. Okay.
We all have kids and we chase them around here. We hope that we talk a little bit.
Yeah.
We're good.
All right. Great. Okay, so tend to be on seventeenth in June. Next up, Superintendent Evaluation Process. We did this, I think, the first year I was on the board. And then skipped it the next year. It's just kind of a good practice for school boards. It's not really like to evaluate the superintendent for their paid benefits, but just to maintain communication, kind of do it once yearly check in. Like, I think you're doing that.
Yeah.
That is informing that there's like a online process that
Yep, there's a, yep, since you're members of the State School Boards Association now, you have access to an online tool that is very self-explanatory and easy for you to fill out as individuals. And then it can be sent to either the clerk or the president to tabulate the official evaluation. So you have your individual one, then it tabulates the rubric scores and/or comments and that sort of thing. And the superintendent also fills it out from a self-evaluation process. This is all choreographed through the School Boards Association. And then a total combined summarized version gets put together that then gets reviewed. The intent is the final one gets reviewed in the executive session with the superintendent. And then superintendent and the board president signs off on behalf of the collective group. And then there's your, you know, there's your evaluation process. But because it's an online and you're a school board member, you would all have access to be able to go in and do this as individuals. And then it syncs with the schools version and it makes it very seamless. It's a tool that was used, you know, in the different superintendencies that I have hired coming here. And it, you can make it as elaborate as what you want to write in there or as simplified as you want to write in there. So and it, it's a cross-section of business items, curriculum items, public relations. I mean, it allows you to really look at all the different aspects included in the superintendency, not just, you know, limited selection. You can make it cover everything that really flows through the district office.
Yeah, does sound like that.
That sounds pretty much like what we did before, but with paper forms and then one person like combine them all on the one form. I don't know how that works. All right, so is there like a start date for that type of process, like a start or? There's a webinar that is on Wednesday I would hope to attend.
I would say if there's some kind of training that we could see that we can like log on and start using and get used to it for future.
Using it now, but getting used to it for the three days.
Yeah, and then you could go on and log on past webinars and see it in practice how that was supposed to work. And then once you agree that that's what you're doing.
Can we get that in an email, like websites links, all of that information in one email? Please, thank you.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to our consent agenda. These are agenda items that happen every meeting, usually approve them all in one group. And we'll do that again tonight. So kind of a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D. Ken, the motion, and second, from Audra. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, carried. Okay, moving on to action items. I'm kind of gonna go through these pretty much one by one. Because some of them deserve a little description. I can do the first two together though, a couple fixed asset disposals. I got a motion for items eight A and B. Ken and Sarah, any discussion? Just want to say these were purchased with tax dollars, so they're in the budget as surplus items to be approved. All in favor? Aye, carried. Okay, the next one, item C, Prospect School Contract, kind of got a motion. Audra and Tara, any discussion? This is pretty standard, it's a, I don't know what it is. Okay, all in favor? Aye, carried. Next item is A D, the F E A A M O A, kind of a motion.
I have a question about this.
We got a motion to put it on the floor first. Okay? Second, Audra, any discussion? Go ahead.
What is the housekeeping part of it? I'm, I'm guessing I'm confused on what it is. It's not really descriptive in hearing.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yep. So the administrative unit here at Fort Edward, we don't currently have any administrators that are permanently or probationarily appointed to the administrative unit. We have a teacher on special assignment and we have an interim principal. Those would be two people who would be in that union. Their contract expires June thirtieth. In talking with our labor, labor relations specialist, Rachel Rosetto, as well as because our administrators are part of SAENES, which is the statewide association of school administrators who would represent them in negotiations, we all felt that since we are in the process of hiring new administrators to be a part of this, instead of negotiating a new agreement that we don't have people in place yet, we would extend the existing agreement one year to allow us to get people in place and then we can decide what the contract terms.
That makes sense. Because I was confused, thank you.
Yes.
How's it, housekeeping? Who's getting cleaned out? Perfect, thank you for your.
I personally think negotiating against nobody is a greater negotiation, you know, it's not good practice.
Thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, carried. Okay, next up, letter E, the F I D A M O A, have a motion?
A motion.
Audra, second. Tara, any discussion?
Do you want to be with us?
Yeah, I'm, I have some concerns. I am all for giving people opportunity and I reflected on this after we talked about it a little more. I'm not sure that the public should pay for that opportunity though. If we're giving a waiver to the person that's not exactly qualified position, that's pretty much a given. If we give them a two-year waiver, they should provide their own education and not the taxpayers in my way of thinking, but.
So this is a reimbursement.
For the F I D A one, number two?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm looking at my phone here, but it's not coming up.
That's all right. So I had talked about, when I briefed you on some possibilities.
Yes, this is the reimbursement of, of education.
Yes, so they would be required to pay for the education upfront.
Yep.
And once secured it, there will be a reimbursement. With the intent they would have to work seven years for the district and then they would not be responsible for paying it back. If it's less than seven years, it's prorated how much of that they would have to.
My concern is that it's not enforceable. You know, if they were to get an attorney, it's, it's gonna be sticky. I've already checked into it. And the other problem that I have is that we're setting precedent for the rest of our staff. We're gonna have, most of our teachers have always paid for their own education, we've not reimbursed them for it. So my concern would be that later on down the road, they're gonna say, well, best practice was we paid for the media specialist to get their education, why can't I get it for this position? I, I did some thinking about this and I, I just, I'm very concerned about the taxpayers reimbursing for education. I mean, I think that we're allowing the opportunity for a person that may be great physician and doing a great job. And we're giving them a waiver for the next two years, but for us to pay for this taxpayers is a concern to me. I don't, that's my way of looking at it.
We could do more. Have more discussion about it, look into it more.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a, I'm just giving my opinion.
I agree, I agree.
I'm okay with that.
Uh, table it for next meeting. Or table it to discuss and exactly come back and possibly move on it.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm just giving my opinion, I'm not speaking for everyone, so it's, you know, what everyone else wants to do. I just, I in good conscience can't have the taxpayer reimburse for an education that every other teacher has paid for themselves. Thinking about it.
I would say next meeting, I think we need more time.
Let's do a next meeting so that we can actually like set it really. I mean, we need more discussion, maybe just.
Okay.
Executive session.
Table it. Tara, second, Sarah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Okay, item eight F, another F I D A M O A. This is for chaperones for music festivals. Gives them two days of, two sessions of chaperone pay for music festivals. Ben said this is in line with other, you know, common practice, standard practice. Shoot, I was supposed to get a motion first. Can I get a motion on that one? A F, Ken and Sarah, any discussion? Any other discussion? This seems, seems good.
Yeah, it's pretty standard.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor? Aye, carried. Okay, next up, eight G, the F A S M O A. This is to help establish a permanent teacher's aide, like we've been discussing the last few months. Like a permanent substitute, substitute teacher over here. Can I get a motion on that? Tara and Audra, any discussion?
I have a question.
Further discussion, go ahead.
What is the contractual hiring rate for this position?
Uh, it would be step one of the contract for F A S, for T A, so.
Is it below the eighteen forty-nine?
Is step one F A S's salary like yearly, is it, or is it hourly?
It's a contractual rate that it is paid hourly. However, you are guaranteed a sum of pay as long as you don't take all your sick days, whatever. But it is, uh, they tell you basically this is how much you're gonna get. My concern is just if we're hiring somebody in as a sub higher than what we're paying a T A to come in and work for us permanently, I would rather work the sub pay than I would to come in and work permanently.
No, I get what you're saying.
I just, and I don't think it's fair to somebody that's getting hired permanently for someone.
Oh, I agree.
For them to get, another person to get paid higher.
It would be the lowest rate.
Level one.
But in compliance with the law, so we're looking at minimum wage and/or the language for step one in the, in the contract. And it's a one-year, basically is a, it's almost like a pilot agreement to see if this is a position that works well for us in managing our human resources with absences. And that's what this is signifying, is that it's not binding for adding the position to the contract permanently. It's a one-year trial program to see if it works.
I know, I think it's a great position to have. I think it's definitely needed. I just don't want the discrepancy in the pay for people. I just don't know that that's fair.
So do we need more information or are we okay to?
It's eighteen forty-nine to start next year.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, item G? Yep, carried. Can I group the next two together, bowling merger and baseball merger? Some kind of motion for items eight, each and I together. Tara and Ken, any discussion? These are just mergers that we do every year. We got an informal league.
They're placeholders a long time in advance.
Yep. They might not happen, but. Can I get, all in favor for these two?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Okay, next up, item J, a donation from Crystal Mab. Can I get a motion on that? Tara and Sarah, any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep, this is for generous donation clothing to the school nurse. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Next up, donation from the Adirana League, can I get a motion? Ken and Sarah, this is for a generous donation for the Adirana League in the amount of eight-two dollars and fifty cents for the Fort Edward Backpack Program. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Next up, item L, donation from Christmas Project slash Operation Santa, can I get a motion on that? Sarah and Ken, this is donation from Christmas Project slash Operation Santa in the amount of one thousand for the backpack program. That's great, thank you very much, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Okay, and item M, Election Inspector Rates, can I get a motion on that? Tara and Audra, this is to establish election inspector rate of pay for the upcoming election. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, carried. Okay, moving on to personnel. Gonna read the little blurb here. All appointments are subject to change and compensation peroration pending emergency school closings and required reductions of force. All coaching appointments are made pending completion and verification of all required coaching credentials with the stipend per F I D A contract measured with experience and no other salary benefits. All coaching extracurricular appointments are subject to reduction in compensation peroration pending final student enrollment numbers and pending the outcome of any potential mergers and emergency school closings. I'm gonna kind of just group these together by function. Kind of got a motion for items A and B together. Audra and Ken, any discussion? Yeah, thank you for your service, district, all in favor? Aye, carried. Okay, then moving on to the election staff, can I get a motion for items C through F? Tara, second, Sarah, any discussion? Again, thank you for your service, especially Casey. Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye, carried. Okay, next up, summer academy staff. Can I get a motion on items G? G through X. Motion from Sarah, second from Ken, any discussion?
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thanks for getting up for summer.
It's an amazing program.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Okay, item Y, student teacher, A Gillis, I get a motion. Sarah, Audra, any discussion?
I think that's really neat.
Yeah, I thought it was really cool.
Yep. All in favor? Carried. Uh, item Z, head bus driver W Gray, can I get a motion for that? Tara, second, Sarah, any discussion?
Thank you. Thank you.
So he's gonna finish out his current position and then start with us, go first.
Great, thank you so much, welcome to the team.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Okay, and now it's time to meet when we have time for a second public comment period. Need a, have there been any interested public comment people?
No.
Okay. Uh, we need to enter into executive session next. Can I get a motion to enter executive session? Sarah and Ken, all in favor? Aye. Excellent. Very executive.
I have a question.
I'm older than you. Older than you.
Don't talk about age.
Carol, are you older than me?
Yes.
Can I get motion to adjourn the meeting? Sarah and Audra.
Okay.
All favorite. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you everyone. She was my oldest.
Thank you.
No, I'm older than everyone here.